President.
We have a quorum.
Okay, if you'd all stand for the invocation, please. We have Pastor Tom Anderson with us from the Horizon Christian Church. Welcome Pastor.
Hey Mayor, City Council, thanks for opportunity to be with you today and friends also. It just seems fitting this week being Thanksgiving that we always count our blessings. The word of God encourages us to always show respect and honor and to pray for those in authority over us. So would you join me as we just pray a blessing upon the mayor and the city council today? And behalf of all of us, we just thank you for what you do for our city. So Father, we just thank you this morning, this day, this afternoon. Lord, for these you've placed an authority over our city. We just pray for them today, Lord, blessing, wisdom, integrity, and honesty. We pray that you would help them to govern well and true. And may because of their integrity, our whole city be blessed, all of our projects be blessed, and people would know in our city that we have a city council that does the right thing for the right reasons. And we just pray blessing upon their ministry, their work today, if we pray this in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you and God bless everybody.
Thank you Pastor. If you'd remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. Schmidt, would you lead us?
Please join me. My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now we have comments from the public. Anyone want to speak on the comments from the public? I have one card. Come on up, John Howitt. Come on up, you have three minutes here.
I'm the sponsor right here. You're mayor?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, my name is John Howitt and I'm a local business owner. Approximately three years ago, I met with many of you in my capacity as president of the Local Pilots Association. At that time, our association members were deeply concerned about the way our airport was being run. Mr. Mayor, you and the members of the city council told me that you heard our concerns and would give careful consideration in selecting the next airport trustee. You selected Adam Mayberry. I'm here today to commend Adam for the wonderful job he has done since his appointment. Four years ago, I could only offer complaints on how the airport was being run. Today, I can only offer praise. Adam, as chairman of the trustees, has exceeded all of our expectations. Today, our airport looks beautiful. Management, trustees, and the community collaborate on policy issues, and our airport government now operates in an open and transparent manner. It is important to me, my fellow pilots, and the current president of our association, Bob Beer, sitting right over there, that we publicly commend Adam for a job well done. And you, our elected officials, for your thoughtful insight in appointing him to the airport authority. Thank you very much. It's very important to me to come here and, you know, I offered a lot of complaints, but to come here and offer some praise. So thank you, thank you all for your appointment, Adam. He's just done a terrific job.
Couldn't agree more with you, John. I appreciate you being here. I'm sorry, Adam's sick today.
Oh, okay. Well, he's probably sick because he didn't want me to comment. He said, "Just send a letter."
Sure. Well, I'm glad you're here and I wish Adam was here. Maybe he's watching us on TV, I hope so.
All right. Well, you know, equally important, I told Adam the other day that I not only praised him, but praised all of you guys for doing a terrific job in appointing him. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public comment? Okay, next, approval of the agenda. Anybody want to take anything out of order? If not, looking for a motion. Mr. Lawson?
Move to approve.
Do you have a second? Mr. Smith?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Lawson, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve the agenda as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Next is recommendation to approve minutes of the council meeting of November 12, 2013. Any omissions, corrections, or deletions? Looking for a motion, Mr. Lawson?
Move to approve.
Do you have a second? Mr. Smith?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Lawson, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve the minutes as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Before we get started, I'd like to, we have some young ladies here from the city of Reno, from Reno High School, that are coming to, for their government class and watching our council meeting today. They said they came to the Sparks Council meeting because we're more accessible, so I just wanted people to know that. And if you'd, come on up for a minute just to say a couple of words, make sure your teacher sees you on TV, so she knows, or they know who your, your teachers know that you're here.
Them too.
Oh, them too?
Yeah.
Good, come on up. You get it, yeah, you're right, Ron, I get extra credit for this. Come on up and tell us what your name is.
People as far away as New York is watching.
Exactly. Millions, millions of people.
Yeah.
Across Europe.
This is your government, this is your government at work. So let's start right here on this side. Just tell us who you are. Step up to the microphone, don't be bashful.
Just right here?
Yes.
All right. Hi, I'm Maddie Seabird.
Welcome.
Reno, hi.
Hello, I'm Rachel Holt.
Hi, Rachel.
Hi, I'm Camille Stivston. Reno, hi.
Welcome.
Hi, I'm Autumn Forso from Reno High School.
Hi, Autumn.
Hi, I'm Malika Pereira from Reno High School.
Welcome.
Hi, I'm Deisha Nichols from Reno High School.
Hi, Deisha. Well, thanks for coming. Don't you have any boys in your class?
They slack off.
They slack off.
A bunch of slackers.
Yeah.
Well, thanks for coming. I hope you're, you're not disappointed and try to stay awake when you go through this, okay? All right. All right, let's move on to consent items. Anybody want to pull a consent item? Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not necessarily want to pull a consent item, but question, have we ever had reversion of acreage on general business, on consent items, the set of general business items? It's just an odd place.
Yes, you have, Councilman Schmidt. From time to time, when the reversion acreages come in, I've always asked for them to be on the consent agenda.
Okay.
I can think of one exception. It was a reversion of a major subdivision. We did it as a general business item.
So we're not considering this one a major at all?
No, this is a cleanup of a property in the old Lotton Block downtown where some of the old historic property lines are still shown on the assessor's map.
Okay.
And we're cleaning them up with this map.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, looking for a motion. Mr. Smith?
Move to approve consent items 5.1 through 5.4.
Do you have a second? Mr. Lawson?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Lawson to approve the consent items. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Let's move on to general business. Consideration and possible award of an informal bid to Gearhart &amp; Berry Construction, Inc. in the amount of $56,824.80 for the off-haul and backfill to the impacted and soil-wasted material encountered during excavation activities at the Regional Transportation Commission Southeast Connector. Welcome, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, Michael Drinkwater, Tom Wharf Plant Manager. Before you, I know you have to consider them independently, but items 6.1 through 6.3 on the general business are all connected to this dump site that was discovered during the construction of the Southeast Connector in approximately March of this year. I'm sorry, I'm not an AV person. Is this, I don't know how to operate the screen.
I'll get it for you.
Keywood Construction uncovered what turned out to be an historic waste dump on the Tom Wharf property on the west side of Steamboat Creek in the vicinity of the Southeast Connector construction. They were excavating for their flood, flood storage pond or flood mitigation pond. Thank you. Zoom in, you see the big flat dirt spot. This is a 1964 aerial photo. The big flat spot that's being excavated right here is Tom Wharf. This spot right here, this Oxbow Lake, this is the site of the contamination that was uncovered in March of this year. In 19, you see that Steamboat Creek has already bypassed this Oxbow that we believe is a relic of the blasting of the Vista Reeves in the early 1960s that allowed the water to move through quickly. It cut off that Oxbow. Regrettably, some trash was dumped into that Oxbow, and that activity continued. We estimate perhaps into the late 1970s, perhaps into the early 1980s, when it was ceased. It was uncovered earlier this year. It is on our property. We own it, we have to mitigate it. That is what we have before you today. The site was characterized by McGinley &amp; Associates. Initially, it was thought to be high in hydrocarbons, particularly gasolines and diesel fuels. That turned out not to be the case, thankfully. So we now have what amounts to 2,800 cubic yards of regular trash. 1,700 yards has been excavated and is stockpiled onsite. It was stockpiled by Keywood. 1,100 yards remains in place that must be excavated, all of it taken to Lockwood for disposal, again, as regular trash. So that, that was the one bonus we had here. So what you have before you is the three business items. The one for the contractor, Gearhart &amp; Berry, was the low bidder to do the actual excavation and haul it off-site. We need to pay Lockwood to take the waste. And then because there was a spill report filed by Keywood Construction and their environmental consultant, C.H. Stowe Hill, at the time of the discovery, we need to close that. That requires some extra environmental testing. So item 6.3 is the agreement with McGinley &amp; Associates, a local environmental consulting firm, to do that closeout testing on our behalf to prove that we've mitigated the site properly.
Okay. Questions on 6.1 through 6.3? Mr. Lawson?
So who ends up paying for this?
We do, sir. It will come out of the treatment plant's budget.
So one-third Sparks, two-thirds Reno?
Yes, sir.
And Keywood's not responsible, or the RTC's not responsible at all?
Correct. This is historic waste on our property. If, the way the laws work, if we could prove that a third party did it, we might have some recourse against that third party. The fact that it's so old and it very likely was our own activity, unfortunately, regrettably, we're going to have to own this one.
Okay, thank you. When you say historic, you mean it's happened a long time ago? Not that it's historical in any kind of value or anything?
That is correct, sir. I apologize for the potential confusion. No, there is no historic value in this material at all. It happened before any of the current staff was at the treatment plant.
Yeah.
And we just have to clean it up, sir.
Okay. Questions? Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make sure I said you correctly, we, as in the city of Sparks, created the disposal?
That's an inference, sir. But it likely, based upon the waste that was found, at least some of it came from the treatment plant.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions? Okay, let's take them one at a time. 6.1, any questions on 6.1? Okay, if not, looking for a motion. Mr. Kerrigan?
Move to approve.
Do you have a second? Mr. Smith?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Kerrigan, seconded by Mr. Smith to approve 6.1 as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. 6.2 is consideration and possible authorization to allow the treatment plant manager to enter into an industrial waste and disposable agreement with waste management in the amount of $35,000 to dispose of impacted and solid waste material encountered during excavation activities on the Regional Transportation Commission Southeast Connector Phase One project. Any questions on 6.2? If not, looking for a motion. Mr. Schmidt?
Motion to approve.
Do you have a second? Mr. Smith?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Schmidt, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve 6.2. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. 6.3 is consideration and possible approval of an additional environmental consulting service contract with McGinley &amp; Associates in the amount of 27,25 to perform remediation coordination of the off-haul and backfill of impacted and solid waste material encountered during the excavation activities on the Regional Transportation Commission Southeast Connector Phase One. Questions?
Quick question.
Mr. Lawson?
When you said "we," you're not referring to the city of Sparks, you're referring to Tom Wharf?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I want to make that clear. When the answer, Mr. Smith, it sounded like "we" was city of Sparks, so it's a Tom Wharf issue. We just happen to run it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, looking for a motion?
Move to approve.
Do you have a second? Mr. Smith?
I'll second, but I have a question also.
Go ahead.
So Reno's paying the two-thirds on the 6.1, 6.2, and 6.3?
Right. These items will come out of the treatment plant's operating budget and then will be split according to the...
So that's the total amount?
Well, there's, there's three, all three in the aggregate. Yes, sir. We believe that that is the total amount. There's a little bit of extra. We have a force account in case the estimated numbers are not exactly right, but we had initial testing done to characterize the site, so we have high confidence that what's before you is accurate.
So Sparks's portion is around $30,000, $40,000, is that what you're telling me?
Uh, yes, sir. In the aggregate, that's approximately correct.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, there's been a motion by Mr. Lawson, seconded by Mr. Smith. Any further questions? All those in favor, or please vote. Passed unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Drinkwater, appreciate it. Okay, next is 6.4. Presentation, discussion, and possible action directing the city manager through the regional business license and permit program team in conjunction with the city of Reno, city of Sparks, Washoe County, and the Washoe County Health District to engage in vendor contract negotiations and financing, to develop an interlocal agreement, and to research a regional technology fee mechanism. Mr. Driscoll?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Steve Driscoll, acting city manager, for the record. For quite a while, we've been looking at regional services, shared services, and consolidated services for the region. And one of the things that we took a hard look at was our regional licensing for business licenses and our permitting for our building permits process. And over the last year and a half or so, we've been working pretty diligently as a region to look at these programs because they have a particular likeness between us from the standpoint that pretty much the major customers for Sparks are also customers for these same services in Reno and Washoe County. And so with your permission and direction through the manager, we had been working on looking at regional solutions. We did come up with a software product that we felt met the needs of these two programs, and they happened to be a program that would do both of them internally and simultaneously. And so we've done the legwork. Sparks actually stepped away from the process in the late spring after the budget was closed because of the dollar amounts that we're looking for and an expectation that there would be some spending required during the current fiscal year. That did not take place based on negotiations and some other timing mechanisms, and now it looks as though by the time we finalize some negotiations, that we would not be in a process to bring the system onboard until the 2014, 2015 fiscal year. And with that, I've brought before you a quick presentation and some discussion on where we are with the system, and then to seek some policy direction from the council on a couple of different particular items. So what I want to do is to go through the slides, a quick slideshow that we've been doing, we've used this for a couple of things at this point. This was given to the city of Reno and the Washoe County Commission when they considered this same item that you're considering today. We've also presented this same presentation to the Washoe County Development Services User Group and the Builders Association of Northern Nevada has seen the same presentation. Next will be what we're doing here today, and then there's a meeting scheduled for the 10th of December. There will be a public workshop to be held in the council chambers in the city of Reno, and we'll have various groups of people that'll be involved in that. And then if necessary, we'll do a follow-up with the AGC, the General Contractors Board as well, because the permitting system is the largest piece of what we're talking about today. So we've engaged directly the stakeholders with that. So the vision that was kind of given by the policymakers, yourselves included, was really trying to look at our licensing and permitting from any license, any permit, anytime, anywhere is the ultimate goal. Because right now, depending on what you're doing, depends on where you have to go and how many stops that you have. And so this was something that you provided us direction on a couple of years ago, and we've worked on it in various projects. And so by asking different questions and talking to our stakeholders and talking to you as the policymakers, what we found was we want to see online services. We want to get into the 2013 era, and we want to be able to do applications and renewals and payments, and we want to look up information and see status reports, and we want to be able to process and utilize electronics for paper-in, paper-out replacement, which is what we have today. There's also from your customers, since the same customers, a core of same customers doing business in all three jurisdictions, there was a real wanting to have something be regional, whether it is separate but looks the same, or it's one and it's covered over the multiple jurisdictions. And so by doing that, really looking at consistency between the jurisdictions and having business processing that makes sense for the same providers doing the same services. Specifically, what your stakeholder groups are looking for is online, and that what the reason they want that is they're looking for 24 hours a day, seven days a week. They don't want to be locked into a Monday through Friday, 8 to 5 for our business. They want to be able to do what they need to do. So if they want to process a whole bunch of water heater permits on a Saturday, they can do that without it having to need us to touch it physically and go. They also were asking that we would take a look at our practices and processes and look at it from their point of view and try to do the things that makes it easier for them as the customer to feed the processes that we require. Additionally, they were looking for integrated database where that their information can get put in once, and then everyone who uses it accesses it without any change mechanism or extra keystrokes unless there is something that has to be modified. So you start reducing duplication of effort on their part and duplication of effort on our part, because for the most, at this point, in both permits and licensing, we're doing all of the work manually, even to our systems, and we don't have any online capability and we don't have any cross-transformation of information. By doing these types of work processes, we're anticipating both, on both sides of the equation, both from the customer and from ourselves, of having cost savings because we're going to eliminate duplication of effort, and we're going to use technology to work our work processes. And here, we'll use technology both as a tool and then we'll use it for best practices, and that way, if we need to make changes, we can do things fairly quickly, and change in one jurisdiction would theoretically be the change for all three. So we would ask our question, we've asked the question, what happens if we don't do it? Right now, we have no online capability and customer service, or very limited, if there is some, in the other jurisdictions, there's a little bit. We certainly do not have any regional integration, even though business license, for instance, we developed over three years ago, an application that satisfies all three jurisdictions. At the end of the day, it still has to be input by each jurisdiction manually. You can't type it all in once and cross-transfer it. We certainly have very, very limited ability to share customer information. Most of it's done manually or verbally. We're not able to submit electronic copies of anything and have it be anything more than a PDF file. It doesn't populate, can't be used, and we have multiple systems between the three jurisdictions at this point. None of them talk to each other. So we went through a very complex process, developed a request for proposal over a year ago. We went through and looked at really a national search, and we had multiple responders. It came down to three major companies that do this for both types of software products, and it came down to the final negotiations. We're in final negotiations with a company called Asella. And Asella Automation is really the current company that owns Permits Plus, which was the permitting system that we had used and county had used. Reno had moved to the newer version of Asella a couple of years ago, and will be upgrading along with this project. In looking at the region as a whole to bring everybody up to the same system for both permitting and licensing, it's a $1.67 million investment between the three jurisdictions, and that is all the consulting, implementation, training, the rights to the software, and having the system up and running in a hosted environment. We took a hard look at doing this ourselves with our people, our hardware, our software, and the incremental increase to have Asella actually be the keeper of the hardware and to keep it running for us, the incremental cost made, just made business sense to let them do that work and to keep things current and keep it running annually to keep that going for all three jurisdictions, $479,000. And what it works on is what we call a hosted system. We utilize their storage, their cloud, if you will, to keep everything, all of their business processing is done in the United States, none of it's done offshore. They have their own backups, they have their own continuity of operations, so if something goes down, it's instantaneous to us. And so with that, we've worked ourselves through and looked at the different allocation methodologies, and I did provide in the staff report a breakdown in detail between the three jurisdictions. The way it works best for us in this, it's based on the number of users that would be utilizing the system for the most part. The system has online capabilities through a website so that it has citizen access for transparency of information. Anything that's public, they could go look at, whether they're a business license holder or a permit holder. And as it works then, in the $1.67 million total, Sparks's share would be $407,988, and we'd be looking to pay that cost over five years. And the annual hosted fee, which is based on the number of people using the system, both in their offices or in the field, the city of Sparks, their, our cost in that $479,000 would be $41,824,000 per year for the first five years that would be locked in. We could do this by ourselves, we wouldn't have to do it as a region, but our $400,000 investment would be almost a half a million if we did it on the investment part, and the $40,000 a year licensing fee, if we were to do it on our own, would be well over $75,000 just for us to do it by ourselves. So as us doing this as a region, there is some significant savings to us and to the other jurisdictions. And there's savings even to Reno, even though they're already on the system. So that's pretty significant numbers. It's net new numbers to us. It makes us, using a system and to have technology helping us do what we can do. We're looking at it from the standpoint of what it will do for us. The electronics alone on itself, when you start looking at like plan processing, for instance, it's a fairly large dollar amount for anyone to supply us with sets of plans to meet our requirements with the numbers and all the reproduction costs. And then it goes through a step at a time. Here, we'd be doing it electronically. You could have multiple people looking at processes at the same time and really just kind of helping our customers work on a quicker basis and to get all the information at once as we do things. And so for the investment, we're really looking at having a proper tool doing the work that we need. Because it's net new dollars and it's something especially for the city of Sparks that we've not been, we've not had dollars related to our permitting for a while. We stopped carrying maintenance on Permits Plus several years ago because it was a system that was no longer supported by the vendor. We didn't see any reason to pay for it, because if it broke, we were going to have to pay to fix it anyway. A business license system that we have, we're really using the manual process. We've never upgraded, we never bothered to upgrade up to the, to the online. The online capabilities are nothing compared to what it is now. So because of that, we've taken a look at, as well as Washoe County and Reno, of how might we possibly recover some of this net new expense that's providing net new technology to our customer base? And that's been the discussion that we've been having with groups like BAN and the D-SU group, and we'll be talking with folks from the chamber. Our customers are telling us that if they could have a regional system that is reasonably consistent, that also does processing in a more timely manner, that they would be willing, as business people, to pay an incremental increase in fee. We run into, so by doing that, we started doing some research. One of the things that jurisdictions are using all over the country, including in the state, is a technology fee. So you have the new technology and you're paying that back, both the capital investment and the ongoing maintenance. And so we've been doing some research on technology fee. The research is not finished, and I'll discuss that a little bit more. I did provide you with some of the research that's been done by the Washoe County DA. I did provide you with some of the research that's been done by the Washoe County DA's office, and the reason that we were looking at the DA's office doing some of the work is that we're proposing with the three jurisdictions for the county to be a fiscal agent to pay the vendor, because the vendor only wants to be paid by one person in the region, and let us pay the county back for the different things that are involved with this system. That provides us with the lowest possible lease rate, and any other financing charges that we might have, we can utilize their bonding rates if we go from that standpoint. So we start talking about tech fees. We could be affecting either the Business Development Fund or the General Fund, depending on which process and program we were working with, and that's one of the reasons that we haven't really come to a final conclusion, and we're not prepared to do a final proposal on what the tech fee should be and what it should look like, but I can give you some more general information. Let me move beyond this. With the tech fee, there's two components. There's the original investment, and then there'd be the ongoing maintenance costs. And what we're looking at is what our options are, what NRS allows us to do, because being Dillon's rural state, we can only do what they've done, what they've allowed, and different financing arrangements have different requirements and different options. The state's currently struggling a little bit with the idea of purchasing a hosted system or access to a hosted system, because while it looks like an operating lease or a capital lease, at the end of the day, you don't own anything, and there's nothing that you can take. There's no software that you can bring in, there's nothing that you can escrow. You're really kind of at the mercy of the cloud system, and that's really the technology and where it's going. We're comfortable with what's there, and the state's doing some review and doing due diligence. So again, that's part of the reason that we have some issues. So we start looking at fiscal sustainability. For a system like this, you're working with two things. You've got the ongoing repayment of the upfront capital costs, if you will, or the operating lease, and then you'd have the annual maintenance that you're working with. And in both instances, it's money you're spending for the new technology, and you're staying as current as you can by utilizing a hosted system. So there's three payment options that you'd work with. One is dealing with only the, what we'll call the capital piece. There's a second that's dealing with an operating piece. And then the third question that we've all started to deal with, and it's actually came up from us into the region, from your IT WIG that you agreed to, and you directed the manager to work on, on the 18th of last month, is looking at, well, that's great that you buy it now, but when you need to replace it in 10 or 15 years, how do you pay for it then? So there's kind of three options. And those are the things we're discussing with your stakeholders group. At this point, all three types of reimbursement or fee structures are, while they're not, haven't been voted on or accepted, they're certainly understood, and they're certainly viable options. So the next steps for us at this point, and especially for the city of Sparks, and what the staff report is asking us to do today, is I'm here to answer questions on the system itself and take ourselves forward. We're looking for direction today to the city manager to reengage in the negotiations and be one of the three partners with the Acela product, negotiate the best possible program that we can, solidify the dollar amounts. What you see in front of you today is worst case. We do have some programming questions that maybe we can defer that go from there. The second thing is, since there has been a desire by Reno and a desire by us to do payments on the capital cost, if we could spread it over five years, that's easier than necessarily doing it in one. Certainly, the council has the ability to do a one payment if they wanted to, but in looking at a five-year option, to do any kind of payment and to use Washoe County, for instance, as a fiscal agent, we would need an interlocal agreement that would define our responsibilities, the things that we will pay for, and what we would be doing over a period of time. The next thing we would do is providing some direction to your staff to continue to work on the technology fee component. With your budget, there are two things that will happen. One, with action today, we would be asking the manager, you would be asking your manager to include this as a discussion item in his recommendations for the next budget cycle. And as part of that, you'd have appropriations on the one side, possible revenue on the other side would be the technology fee, and we're asking also direction here for us to continue the research to make sure what we can do legally. Work with your stakeholder groups to see what their thoughts are, and then bring back to you at a different time exactly what we think is a good alternative, or at least maybe even two alternatives, for possible cost recovery on this expense. And so with that, I'm going to answer questions.
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think the simple answer is, Steve, yes, we move forward on this thing. I mean, it's something that I think the mayor and I worked with, with shared services and all the staff. It was definitely the high point of shared services, a three years' worth of work. I think it might even be included in most, the only thing that got productive out of three years' worth of work, and I think it's important that we continue to do that and put that together. My question is, there was a comment up there that said that there was cost recovery in five years. How is that calculated? If we do a $500,000 investment, there's cost recovery in five years?
What we were suggesting, what was being suggested through Acela, who would be carrying the operating paper through one of their subsidiaries, is that the best possible operating lease rate that they could give for something this size is about 1.99% interest per year. And so on our $400,000 investment of all of the upfront costs to get the system running, we were looking at trying to recover that, is to pay that back through an operating lease over a five-year period of time. That seemed to make sense based on what we would be doing.
Any calculations on estimated reduction in staff cost to do this? You know, FTEs, half one, one and a half two?
The primary area that we've looked at, and we've not done time analysis study, but we are beyond our practical maximum of business licensing to process the paper that's there now. Every month, we print, fold, seal, and do postage, and that becomes lost time.
Absolutely.
What we don't have time to do in that case is follow-ups on renewals and other things, and we spend our time doing that processing. We know that if we spend time following up on business licenses that have not renewed timely, they renew. And so we get the time value of money. We've not done the calculation on if we were to get timely payments instead of four, six, eight months out, getting it within 30 to 60 days. So at this point, we don't believe that with the processing that will still be left over with the system, that we would necessarily reduce any one on staff today, but we would utilize them different. But what we do know is that because we're at our practical maximum, to continue doing the legacy system, we need one to two bodies more to do the paper processing for all of, everything going out and everything coming back in. So we're looking at as to frame future costs and bringing the monies that are due back in sooner. If we found ourselves in a position that we had some extra time after that, one of the things that we're also not doing is we don't have anyone out except for one person in code enforcement that's actually looking and making sure that businesses that are working and operating in the city are in fact licensed. So we would suggest that if we see some savings in that point, we'd be coming back and looking for a complement change to do, you know, revenue enforcement rather than actually reducing overall numbers.
That also produces more revenue. I'd pay for that person that you want to do it.
Absolutely. It might even pay for, in Reno's case, they've added revenue officers and they paid for themselves.
Right. And my guess is that you're going to find, that you're going to be able to save a substantial amount of money in staff time, making the process easier. I mean, it's incredible just to pay an $80 yearly license fee, how much paperwork, you know, we generate from the business side of the community, and then you've got to handle all that paperwork, you've got to open the mail, you've got to cash checks, you've got to do all that kind of stuff, and that's kind of, you know, kind of look at this going. It just doesn't make sense. I think you're going to find yourself going to make more money by putting this system in place, just in the reduction of staff time, and then you can move on to all the other revenue producing things.
We certainly hope on the revenue side for licensing that we'll have that. The business licensing side, or the business permitting side, building permitting side, again, there's a lot of activity that goes on, and we're looking at streamlining the process. You're still going to have a lot of touches in the field for your inspections by the various folks. This will have an online system where they'll walk around with an iPad rather than having to do things on paper, so we know we'll see efficiencies, but we have not even attempted to look at that. Again, we see that more as if we can get this system in place in the next year, and if we continue to have growth, then we'll have efficiencies that will not require us to grow as fast as we might without this technology in place. But again, that will take, depending on the economy, depending on the workflow processes that will be defined by community development and the inspection processes, fire department, their inspection processes, they'll be heavily involved in what we're doing in our work processes.
As far as the technology fee being added, I'm not going to say, no, don't research it, but, you know, I think this is part of being in business, is that we're supposed to be looking and doing investments in technology. We're supposed to be finding ways to make things cheaper and easier to do. And I think that that's part of the customers' taxes. They expect our government to be doing it. They don't expect to be having a technology fee just to be trying to get ahead on things. In 1984, I bought my first computer. I had a 20 megabyte hard drive to it, and it cost $8,000. You couldn't go out to the construction industry and tell your clients that, okay, I want to give you a technology fee, because I just bought a computer to make my business run easier and to make more money out of it. It doesn't make a lot of sense. But I'm not going to say, don't do it, and go ahead and research it. I think it's, might be a wrong sell to go out there to the business community and say, well, we're going to make all this stuff easier for you, but we're going to charge you for it at the same time.
Yes, sir. Thank you for the comments on that. And part of the reason that we looked into the technology fee was some feedback from our stakeholders saying, we wish you would do this, and if you did, we would be willing to do some things. So we are doing the research. We will bring back to the council what we find, and there will be a spectrum for the council to think about. It could be from the idea of it's allocated into your budget process, the expenditure is put in, it just becomes part of what we do, part of the taxes that are paid, as you suggest, all the way to the full spectrum of whatever new we bring in that the customer pays for 100%. We want to do the research, we want to tell you what you can do, and then we can let you make that decision.
Anyone else have a question? I have one public comment, so. Mr. Trey Abney from the chamber? Okay, let's do, Ed has a question, then we'll do Trey's.
Real quick, I've got a few questions. Is there anything on, let's start with, what type of permits are we talking about being included in this?
This would be our entire building permit process. So it would be everything from doing simple water heaters to projects like the Legends. So it would be involved with that. It would deal with all the inspections that are required from that standpoint. On the business license side, it would be dealing with all of the licensing requirements, including the inspections, both on an upfront and an annual basis. It all utilizes the same system, just to find different workflows from that standpoint. Because it's a decision model type program, it is going to be used by the health department for their various types of permits that they do, everything from air quality to food. It is something that the sheriff's office has looked at as possibly a way for them to do the registration on the upfront end of concealed permits. So it really would allow ourselves to take any decision process that we have that flows through a defined, you know, ordinances and codes, we could define a work process to drive that through. And so it does, it's much more than just the two small pieces, and it will be pretty much up to our imagination to use it as a control tool.
So each entity is going to have their own application on the system?
Yes, sir.
Because obviously, other than that, it would require all of us to have the same codes?
What will happen with it is, you'll use the same software technology and hardware technology. Each of the jurisdictions will be able to define their workflow processes. And so for instance, let's say we have a fire inspection and another jurisdiction doesn't. We will be able to continue to require a fire inspection, and it just works itself through. For the sake of the customer, they're asking that we take a look at our workflow processes and to wherever possible, to be as consistent as we can. So if we're going from step A to B to C to D, if they can be the same, they would like, our customers are telling us, we'd like it to be the same. They also recognize that if, from a governance standpoint, this body's requiring something different, that we would then have that in the workflow, that you've got to now check it off to get it done. So from the standpoint that over time, if the three elected bodies wanted to have one process, the system would allow us to do it. If you wanted to have one set of codes and ordinances and sets of fees, the system will allow you to do it, but it will also allow you to maintain your own governance over those processes if that's your desire.
Well, I can tell you with, what do we have, five, seven? We have 17 elected officials, and we can't agree on where to go to lunch, so. And that's going to be difficult to get everybody on the same page.
To give you hope, Mr. Lawson, your business license team over the last year and a half has developed, there are seven workflows, because there are seven types of licenses that are, for business licenses, from step one to finish. There's some sidebars on those, but we have mapped those out, and your business license team is prepared to do that work and drop it in a system that would maintain your governance over what you need, and would just bypass if you don't have it, or it would add it in if you do. So at least that part's done, and the building, the building side of it has done quite a bit of that work too, and so we're probably a lot closer than maybe we give ourselves credit for.
Okay. The last thing is, on the technology fee, and I'm in favor of a technology fee, because it can be ongoing to keep us up, and that's where we find ourselves today, and the city of Sparks is behind the eight ball with our lack of technology. So are we talking about keeping that intact, so after the five years, that will then be money that we can allocate to purchase new or upgrade the systems?
It's an option I'm pushing for, and it's part of, and when we bring back the options, there are three potential options that we've earmarked so far. One is just the capital, one is just the operating, and the third would be both. And when the capital is paid for, to have some incremental fee that you would then bank, that we could legally do, and you would hold that money for when this system is no longer viable and you need something new. So you'd be, you know, setting aside, like we do with our vehicles and our motor vehicle fund today.
And then the last question is, the security of the cloud, is, do we have any issues with having all this information in the cloud, as it were?
At this point, we do not. We define and utilize the different firewalls that would be there. Our main concern is that all of the hardware and software that operates the system stays onshore, doesn't go offshore ever, and that's, we've been assured that that's the case. And we're most concerned about continuity of operations. There is very little information that this system will house and store, that's not public information from the time it walks in and we start utilizing it. So with the exception, it will all be protected at the level it needs to be protected. There'll be online access through a website, the citizen access, and so there will be transparency. And part of this will be the workflows will go, and the testing that your staff will take in to make sure that it continues to have the security that has been promised and is needed.
Okay. And just for the record, I'm in favor of that technology fee.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, now we have public comment. Mr. Abney, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. For the record, Trey Abney, representing the Chamber of Commerce, and I want to thank Mr. Driscoll and his team, and the teams from Washoe County and from the city of Reno. While the elected officials may find it difficult to decide when to go to lunch, I can tell you, your staff on all the jurisdictions work very well together. We support this. This is the next step in what is ultimately would hopefully be a regional business license. We know there's a lot to talk about before we get there, but for my members, for businesses certainly that have locations in all three jurisdictions, to be able to make this as easy as possible to set up shop, I think is what we all want. easy as possible to set up shop, I think is what we all want. We want to talk about jobs, we want to talk about economic development, this makes it easier. We do not have a position as of yet on the technology fee. My guys have to talk about it, we have to have a presentation from the folks working on this. I do appreciate Mr. Schmidt's comments. I think at some point, it is government's job, if government is going to require all these permits and things and hoops to jump through, that they should make it as easy and cheap as possible to do so. However, it is very important that we do have a mechanism where this stuff is being paid for over time, as Mr. Lawson says. We don't want to get into a point where we have a system that we never spend money on, and then we have to really jack up some kind of fee to pay to replace it. And so somewhere in the middle of there, we, again, we don't have a position on the technology fee. I can tell you that if it's between doing nothing, and our only option is doing nothing or having a fee to pay for this, I think a lot of folks will tell you they are willing to pay a small amount in order to have that convenience. But again, we can get into those weeds later, but we do support this effort. We think it's very important for economic development, urge you to support it. Thank you very much for hearing this today, and I wish all of you a very happy Thanksgiving.
Thanks, Trey. Appreciate it. Okay, Mr. Driscoll, I think we've, we're ready to do something here. Thank you for the presentation. Any comments or motions or anything? Mr. Schmidt?
I'd like to make a motion. Go ahead and thank Mr. Driscoll and all the other entities for the report, and move forward with, you know, get back into the game with the negotiation on this thing, and move the project forward and bringing all the financing options to the council that we can take a look at.
Have a second? Mr. Lawson?
Second.
Do you have a motion in a second? I agree, we need, I think we need, what Trey said, we need some kind of a fee in the future. So many times we do things and we don't take into consideration, those things need maintenance down the road, and then we end up short and having a system that's not working well because we can't maintain it. So I would agree that we need some kind of a fee to take care of that. Okay, motion by Mr. Schmidt, seconded by Mr. Lawson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thanks, Trey. Appreciate it. Let's move on to public hearing items. Second reading and possible discussion of CA 213, a request for an ordinance amending the Title 20 of the Sparks Municipal Code to revise criteria associated with minor deviations and to add a major deviation including the process. Ms. Melby?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm Karen Melby, Senior Planner. Before you today is a proposal amendment to Title 20 to revise the criteria associated with a minor deviation and also add a new process called a major deviation. This major deviation process would include, includes in the draft code, the process, the application requirements, the findings that need to be found, and this major deviation would be up to 50% of a quantitative standard. Based on the Phase 2 zoning code analysis and workshops, the city council directed staff to find ways to remove barriers to development and proceed with the preparation of a major deviation code amendment, and that's what I have before you today. The staff met also with the Enterprise Fund Advisor Committee and also a Technical Advisor Committee to review this draft code and also, their comments have been incorporated into the draft that's presented to you today. The code amendment includes a new definition for quantitative requirements, which is defined as a regulation that is capable of being counted or measured. Under the major deviation, the proposed code amendment allows an administrative adjustment up to 10% of a quantitative requirement. Currently, the minor deviation applies to location and/or dimensions of building, parking areas, and internal roadways, including ingress and egress to the site, and does not change or exceed the density. The major, minor deviation would not apply to, or as proposed today, would not apply to signs and parking. Staff is proposing a fee of $120 to process a minor deviation. The major deviation would allow an adjustment from 10, greater than 10% to 50% of any quantitative item. The applicant would have to file an application with staff, and we're suggesting a fee of $1,250. That would be a deposit. The major deviation require a noticing of at least 10 days before, and would notice the property was within 500 feet of the subject property. The planning commission would hold a public hearing within 65 days after filing a complete application. The planning commission must make the findings of the major deviation, that it is consistent with the Sparks Master Plan and the four findings as outlined in the draft code amendment. The planning commission would, has the option of approving, denying, or continuing table the application. There must be an application filed for each major deviation application that an applicant is requesting on their property, with multiple deviations, the cumulative impacts would have to be considered. The major deviation is a new discretionary process and is intended to facilitate development for providing an opportunity for applicants to use creative design, especially in the older areas of the city, where development standards may be outdated or unnecessarily restrictive. The difference between this application and a variance is that a variance requires a demonstration of a hardship. This application would just have to comply with the findings. The major deviation findings are intended to assure that the project is compatible with the existing or permitted uses in the vicinity and also consistent with the Sparks Master Plan. The major deviation is proposed as a discretionary review process, which may result in less predictability and more judgment on a part of the staff. It is, will be important to assess the cumulative impacts on the neighborhood, particularly if the applicant is requesting multiple major deviations. There could be instances when the staff will not have a recommendation or different than what the applicant is requesting. The concerns include the fact that all applicants may focus on major deviations rather than spending time and resources on finding solutions that can comply with the existing codes. The major deviation process will have to be monitored to make sure it doesn't undermine our zoning code. I conclude my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Karen? Mr. Carrigan?
Karen, on this, this was recommended to us by the consultant, correct, when we were doing our zoning code?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, and then my other question is, it says in here, if a neighbor has a problem with a minor deviation, then that person who's putting in for the deviation could go to the major deviation route. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, you know, I fear that somewhere along the line, the neighbor's going to get upset and figure out that if he just protests, it's going to cost his neighbor more money. Is there a way that we can have that person that, you know, is fighting the minor deviation put up some dollars also?
I don't think that would be legally, I'm looking at.
But it's okay for somebody that is upset with their neighbor to say, well, I know if all I have to do is say I don't agree with this, it goes from $120 to $1,250.
Well, we would work with the applicant, the person who wants to do the minor deviation. We would work with them and see if we can find an alternative solution before we would have to go to the process of a major deviation.
Okay, I just.
Amanda?
Mayor Martini, Councilman Carrigan, I'm under the City Board. The distinction, though, Councilman Carrigan, is that under the current code, if you apply for a minor deviation, you have to have the written approval of your neighbor, and so if you can't get that, then you're just, you're just dead in the water. So this would give you, at least give the person, you know, seeking the minor deviation, an option for going forward when currently they don't, so.
Okay, but, okay, so, yeah, I just see it coming, coming down the road, I can just see it, but, okay.
And if I may add, you know, I think the distinction is also that, the one is administrative, right? So without that written permission, that's how we know that the neighbor is aware, and if we go to the major deviation process, then there's a public hearing.
Yeah, just unfortunately, some neighbors don't get along. I know that's hard to believe, but.
No.
Just on your street.
Yeah, just on my street.
Questions? Any other questions? Okay, this is a public hearing item, so open the public hearing. Anyone in the audience like to speak to this particular agenda item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for action. Questions or comments or a motion? Mr. Schmidt?
I move to approve CA-2-1-3 to amend Chapter 20 of the Sparks Municipal Code to revise criteria associated with minor deviations and to add a major deviation process.
Mr. Carrigan?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Carrigan to approve Agenda Item 8.1, CA-2-1-3. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Please display. Passes unanimously with those present. Thank you. You have 8.2?
Yes, I do.
8.2 is a public hearing, consideration of possible action of Resolution Number 3249, revising fees for the development and services provided by the City of Sparks, and specifically considering fees for minor deviation and major deviation applications. Go ahead, Karen.
Good afternoon, Karen Melby, Senior Planner. This resolution is dovetailed after the code amendment, and we are proposing a fee to do administrative review of the minor deviation of $120, which is equivalent to what we charge for, per hour for staff. And then on the major deviation, we are proposing that it would be a deposit of $1,250, and staff would charge our time against that, excuse me, at 120 an hour. The maximum could not exceed the $7,495, and then also, there would be a $500 noticing fee, because we would have to, as proposed or approved under the code, major deviation, there would be noticing within 500 feet of the property. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Karen? Mr. Carrigan?
Just for the record. You went through the advisory committee?
Yes, and also the technical, our tech, our tech group, what do you call it?
Enterprise Fund?
Tech, yeah. We went to the enterprise, EFAC, and also we had a technical advisor group that we ran it by.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, this is a public hearing item, so open the public hearing. Anyone in the audience like to speak to this particular item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for action. Questions? Motion? Mr. Carrigan?
Yeah, I move to adopt Resolution Number 3249.
We have a second, Mr. Schmidt?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Carrigan, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve Agenda Item 8.2, Resolution Number 3249. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thanks, Karen. Appreciate it. Great job.
Thanks.
Have a closed-door session, Steve?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Comments from the public? Anyone in the public like to speak? Comments from the council or city manager? Okay, thanks, ladies. Appreciate it. I only saw one person nod off, I won't tell you who it was. But you did a good job. Thanks for being here. If you want to stick around for redevelopment, we have that next. Seeing no further business, our meeting is adjourned.
Okay, I'll call the order Sparks Redevelopment Agency Meeting for 11:2513. With a roll call, please.
Chairman Smith?
Here.
Agency members, Ratty, absent, Lawson?
Here.
Martini?
Here.
Carrigan?
Here.
Schmidt?
Here.
Agency Attorney Adams?
Here.
Agency Manager Driscoll?
Here.
Thank you.
Ready to go? Okay. I'll open it up to the public. Anybody in the public wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the agency. Recommendation to approve the minutes.
Move to approve, Chair.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Martini, seconded by Mr. Lawson. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Did I misapprove the agenda? I did. So we'll go back one.
Sorry.
Looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
You have a motion by Mayor Martini and a second by Mr. Carrigan. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, reported claims and bills approved for payment and appropriation transfers for the period October 10, 2013, through November 6, 2013.
Move to approve. Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Lawson and a second from Mr. Martini. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, comments from the agency members? Anybody?
Aye.
Okay, I'll open it back up to the public. Anybody in the public wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the agency. Comments from the chief administrative officer? Nothing? Without any objection, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Now that was.